I call this regular meeting of the North Adams City Council to order on January 23, 2024. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer.
Here.
Bona.
Here.
Breen.
Here.
Fitch.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Alesskowitz.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
All present.
Okay, nine members present. We have a quorum. A moment of silent remembrance. Please stand. Tonight, we want to remember Lois Betty. She was employed with the North Adams Veterans Department. And the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Hearing of visitors on agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council. I'm sorry?
Did we skip four minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, okay. Thank you. All right. Motion to approve the minutes of the November 28, 2023 city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve the January 1, 2024 city council meeting minutes. Motion to approve.
So moved.
I'd like to make a motion to change the last paragraph, which states that there were eight councillors present and there were nine.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to amend the eight to nine under adjournment. And I get a second.
Second.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 Okay. And motion to approve the meeting minutes of the January 1 council meeting as amended?
I move to approve.
You don't need to do that. You just adopt them as amended.
As amended, okay. Adopt as amended.
We already did.
Yep, okay.
So we all vote now?
All right.
Another order.
Sorry, point of order. You make the motion for the minutes, then you make the motion for the amendment, and then the motion to adopt as amended. Okay, and then we all vote.
Yes, but the original motion didn't have a second, so we amended without a second to the motion to adopt.
Yeah, we need a second on the original motion.
Second.
Thank you. Motion to approve as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have... Wait a minute, that's not the right one. Okay. Motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of the city council Tuesday, January 9, 2024. Motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, at this point, yes.
There's one more.
Is there one more in there?
It should be this first.
Okay, the hearing, okay. All right. Hearing of visitors on the agenda. This is the opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. Anybody wish to speak on any agenda items tonight? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna... Do I read the paper number on that? Paper number 12353. Yes, okay. Council paper number 12,0353, a petition from National Grid to hold a public hearing for two pole locations on North Church Street. At this time, without objection, I will file the communication and open the public hearing. Okay. Before we start, I want to read this letter. This is from Mr. Tim Lascarbo, and this was dated January 8, 2024, to the North Adams City Council. I have reviewed the petition for identical pole locations from National Grid and have inspected the site on North Church Street as described in the petition. I recommend National Grid proceeds with the project as described in the petition number 30772335 to the city clerk dated December 1, 2023. Any questions, please feel free to call my office at 413-662-3000, extension 3047. Sincerely, Timothy H. Lascarbo. Okay. I will now open the public hearing. Mr. Tatro?
Hello, yes. I'm Mike Tatro, National Grid, and I'm just looking to get permission to set a new pole at 24 North Church Street to serve the building across the street. I think everyone's happy with our location. And what drove this job, the gentleman that revamped the brick portion of that flat iron building, the service that we're gonna re-feed has attached on his building and is piped across his building to feed the next building, which is not really up to code or up to our standards. So that's why we're trying to re-feed that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open this up. Is there anyone from the council with questions? Councillor Breen?
I have a question. We're looking at the petition, and the one that was electronically sent to us says pole four. The new one in the book says pole three.
That was updated tonight, yes.
Okay. So when this was approved, when did it change to three?
It was always pole three. It was typed wrong on the original package. National Grid revised the package and sent us a new package earlier today, I believe.
Yeah, just the wording, that wording only, because the map was correct.
Okay, so that's my question. So at the previous city council meeting, it had four, correct?
It did.
It did, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so the discrepancy between the write-up and the map has been determined that it's pole three?
That is correct.
Okay. And when it was approved on the 8th, was it approved for the three or the four?
It wasn't approved.
It wasn't approved. That was just a notice of the public hearing.
No, the commissioner's letter.
Commissioner's?
Of January 8. Was that approved for four? Because he was referencing this petition.
I spoke with Mr. Lascarbo several weeks back, and he understood exactly where pole three is the reference pole, pole three and a half is their new pole, and he understood exactly, because I had it staked out, he knew where the pole that we wanted to put in was located at.
So did you correct the petition?
Yes.
Okay. So the map is correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so you're figuring 50 feet approximately from pole number three?
Correct.
South.
Yes.
Through the chair. It's a little busy there, about 50 feet. There's a fire hydrant, there's a gate to the school, there's a driveway, and a handicap ramp. Do you know whereabouts it's gonna fall, the pole?
Well, of course, we'll dig safely before we dig for the pole, but it was 50 feet. I measured it, and I had a stake there. Somebody removed it. But we have a little leeway when we go there and dig safely, make sure there's no water lines.
I just wonder if it's gonna be in front of the dentist's, or is it gonna be in front of the school?
Oh, it's more in front of the school. It's towards the...pole three's on the north end of...
The street is, there's a pole four, and then a pole three, and then pole two is actually across the street, and then pole one. So when you add this pole from three going south, is it gonna terminate there, or is it going to pole one or pole two?
Yep. Pole three and a half will be in line with the existing conductors, and then we're just, we're gonna go across the street with the secondary to feed that building.
So the 3.1 will feed to two?
No, it'll feed the flat iron building across the street, building 34-36.
Okay, so if we're looking at the drawing, proposed pole three, one, where will the lines go? Across the street to the west side, or will it go south to pole number one?
It'll go west to building 34-36. It's just to support the secondary to feed 34-36.
So it's not gonna go to pole two?
Well, the conductors will go through. The existing conductors are gonna remain. We're just gonna put a pole in line to support the secondary going across the street. So it'll make that span a little shorter. That's going to the next, to pole two.
Right now, the lines go from existing three to pole two, the lines now, which has to cross the street.
So we'll put a pole in...it's not across the street. It goes one more pole before it goes across the street, I believe.
No. I have photographs here. We were just looking at it. On the east side, it's pole number four, number three. It goes across to two, and then it comes back to one in front of the church.
But we're not gonna do anything to any of those poles. We're just putting a...
So my question is, right now, the lines go from pole three to pole two, which pole two is on the west side of the street. What is the reason for pole 3.1?
Because it's...to support the secondary that's gonna feed across the street. We can't, that distance, it's too long to do what we call a midspan tab. Right now, the service that's feeding pole 34-36 is attached on the south end of the big brick building there that was just remodeled.
Yeah.
And it's piped across his building to feed the next buildings, and that's not up to our electrical code or our National Grid standards. So that's...we have to re-feed 34-36, and there's no way to...
So what would you do with pole number two that's right there?
That's gonna remain, because that's supporting all the electrical service that's going on. They'll remain. There's a bunch that's busy down there with all the...
Okay.
All the apartments and businesses that are fed there. So they'll remain. There'll just be less of a load on...and we're gonna re-feed everything from the other transformer that's on pole three. It's gonna make it better there. And then we'll be able to feed the new apartments that Vessel is putting in, in the brick building. We'll feed them that same way, and it'll be up to code that we do this.
Okay. Okay.
I'll go after.
Okay, councillor Wilkinson?
This might seem somewhat silly. I know we're dragging this out for something that doesn't need to be dragged out, but I believe that legally, there's no such thing as North Church Street. It's always been called that. I believe the post office recognizes that. But in actuality, there's no North Church Street. It's Church Street.
Okay. But we do...we're all on the same page regarding the location of the...
Well, I have no problem with this. I just...it's this little pet peeve. Everybody calls it North Church Street, then there's South Church Street. It's not one of those either.
Right.
All the numbers go in line. Local people have called it for years, but there's no such thing.
Thank you. Councillor Fitch?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for coming here, first of all, Mr. Tatro. I was also confused about the construct of the poles on that street there. I went over there, too, and, you know, it was just in the snow. I didn't have measuring tapes, but I did kind of walk roughly 50 feet, and there already is a pole there on that same side. It doesn't have, like, I think it's called a transformer up on it, but I wasn't sure if you meant replacing that pole or adding a pole right next to it.
No, I'll put a new pole.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm...there's that...
Yeah, I wonder if it's just slightly mislabeled here, because...
Through the chair. So to clarify, you're putting an additional pole up, because if you put everything you want on one of the poles that existing, it would be too much of a load on it. So by putting this second pole, it's allowing, so there's not so much on one pole. That's the way I understood you expressing it, right? Is you're adding, you're adding some new additions. And if you put it on the existing pole, it would be too much. It would either be distance or just too much pole.
Well, correct. Well, we can't do a midspan from the secondary that runs between pole three to pole two. We can't just attach that secondary and go across the street. It's...
It'd be too long.
Right.
Right.
So we put a pole there to support everything, and then we'll re-feed the existing service for building 34-36. And then when the new apartments come for the brick building that was just renovated, we'll use that same pole to support the secondary to feed the new apartments.
Thank you.
It'll be used.
Okay. Councillor Shade?
Yes, I have a few questions and then a statement at the end. First, through the chair. My first question, when you put the new pole in, will there be any disruption to service on North Church Street or anyone that's hooked up currently?
There'll be a short disruption to the five meters at building 34-36. Those are the basement level shops on Eagle Street.
Okay.
They'll shut off the old power and tie in the new power. So it'll be, they'll notify everyone.
Okay.
It'll just be a short period.
Perfect. And then my second question is, any related fees to the installation of the pole? Have those all been taken care of? That's all set?
Yes, they have.
Yes, yeah, that'll be...
Perfect.
The person that actually renovated the brick building is paying this.
Excellent.
This bill. Because that service, that's not legal, that where they're piping across someone's building to feed someone else.
Correct.
And he renovated his building. He's, I mean, I commend Vessel, is his name, for doing that. He could've just caused a little stink for the other property owner.
Absolutely. And I live on North Church, so that's, the other pole is right in front of where I live, so I'm very familiar with the poles there. Thank you for that information. I think that's gonna be a great addition to make sure that that building, when it has new occupants, is getting the proper electricity in a safe manner, because the existing setup doesn't work very well. And yeah, it is a very long distance in between, so I actually think this is a great thing. Also, a point of clarification for councillor Wilkinson, while the street isn't labeled North Church Street, the RMV, the state, and the voter registrations all recognize it as North Church Street. So legally, it's recognized as North Church Street, even though the sign just says church.
After the meeting, I'll tell you why.
Okay.
Any further discussion from the council? So, Mr. Tatro, from what I understand, you're putting a pole midspan to basically reduce the weight and the length of the run from the utility service to the building. Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there anyone, anyone else, anyone from the audience that would like to add to this, or comments? Any further comments? Okay. At this time, hearing no further questions or comments, I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Tatro.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to the council business. Council item number 11,826, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams regarding various fees established in the city code postponed from the meeting of December 12, 2023, with a return date of January 23, 2024. Okay. And councillor Bona, do we have an update on this, please?
Well, yes and no. The update is that we still have not received anything back from the solicitor, and...through the chair to the mayor, it was one or two meetings. How long do you think we need?
Could we do the next meeting so I can keep the pressure out?
The next meeting, okay. So we will postpone this to the next meeting and hopefully hear back from the solicitor.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone to the second meeting in...I'm sorry.
No, first meeting.
First meeting in February, okay. All right. And we have a second on that? Yep. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Council paper number 12,191, communication from councillor Shade requesting the local Department of Health review the rules and regulations to address the storage of garbage postponed from the meeting of December 12, 2023, with a return date of January 23, 2024. On that...okay, that's not this one yet. Did I skip one? No, this is the trash ordinance. Oh, I guess I did skip. No, I didn't. No, that was the next one.
Yep.
Yep, so, okay. Okay. At this time, the Public Safety Committee had not been able to meet before the end of the year to discuss sending this to the city solicitor, so that's not, that has not been done yet. So I'd like to have somebody make a motion to postpone this to the second meeting in February.
So moved.
We have discussion?
Just out of curiosity, how long has this been on the books?
It's been on the books since, I believe it was June or July we had this on the books. We first brought this up.
This is why government doesn't work.
Point of order.
Sorry.
Councillor Shade had her hand up.
Councillor?
Yeah, to answer councillor Wilkinson's question, this is actually about a year old when we first, when I first introduced it. It was in November of 2022. So over a year old.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion to postpone to the second meeting in February. Any further
I have a question. Does that give enough...
Councillor Breen?
Does that give enough time to what needs to be resolved? Can that be turned around with the solicitors in a month? Or should we give it more time if needed?
Councillor Blackmer?
As long as I can just set the date later on after this meeting with the committee, and then this isn't as complicated as some of the other things we've done. So I'm hoping that we can get it to the solicitor and get an opinion back. And I know the mayor can encourage them to get back to us more quickly, as sometimes I can, can I.
So is that wishful thinking? We can do this?
I think we can do it by the second meeting in February.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion to postpone to the second meeting in February. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Council paper number 12,306, an ordinance to amend Chapter 10 Junk and Secondhand Dealers, Article 1, Sections 10-3, records of purchases and sales, inspections of book shopper keeper to display name, 10-4, dealing with minors prohibited, and 10-5, business hours postponed from the meeting of December 12, 2023, with a return date of January 23, 2024. And motion to adopt?
To ev...okay. Move to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Councillor Shade, would you like to update us on that?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So in our loose papers here, the ordinance was updated to reflect the three sections that we are looking to repeal have not changed at all. Those are still the same language. A sentence was added. The following sentence was added, that all business certificate application and fees shall replace the current secondhand licenses and fees, to the second, essentially eliminate the requirement of having a secondary license for secondhand stores, along with the annual fees that are associated with them, and those would be covered by the actual business certificate application and the fees that they already pay. The MGL requirement is not that there has to be a second license, but that there is a signature on file with the city clerk of anybody who has a secondhand license. So by filling out the business certificate application and having that signature on file and paying those fees, that would cover everything required by MGL law, which allows us to not need to have a secondary license for a secondhand business and charge them extra money annually to have that. There's an opinion from the solicitor as well, through an email, that packs up being able to repeal these sections, along with an opinion about the fees. So if anybody has questions on whether or not we have the backing of the solicitor, we do in this case. So I look forward to moving forward with this and making it easier for secondhand stores and dealers and businesses to operate and run in the city of North Adams. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing done. We have a motion on the floor to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Could we please note councillor Bona's abstention?
Yes.
That he removed himself from the table.
Right. One abstention. Councillor Bona is abstaining from this vote.
Just a question. Is it natural abstaining?
I would say that you removed yourself from the conversation and abstained, but either way.
Okay.
Not involved.
Not involved, thank you.
Just wanted to document it in case somebody comes back and says councillor Bona shouldn't have had anything to do with that, because, you know, that never happens to us.
Okay. Okay, council paper number 12,353, an order for National Grid to install one jointly-owned pole at 24 North Church Street and install one midspan pole, number 3-1, approximately 50 feet south of existing...this says pole number four here, but...
Should we change it on there?
Okay, so it's pole number three, okay.
Yeah. Move to adopt. That's my fault, because it wasn't changed on there.
To the chair. Should there be some documentation? Because the electronic copy says pole four, which had the confusion. In the previous city council meeting, it had pole number four. And the document we have now is pole number three.
We have a revised...
Should we mark the copy that this is an update, because it just has the number magically three now? It doesn't say this is amended copy.
I thought it said an updated copy, I thought.
It doesn't say anything on it.
In the email. In the email.
So the confusion again is here at four. It's 50 feet from three, correct?
That is correct. So it should read pole number three, and now, a revised document was received by the city clerk's office today to take care of that error.
So we should mark that, okay.
Yeah.
Also, for clarification?
Yes.
It'll also be included in the minutes, all of that, all of the updated stuff when the clerk does the minutes will be included. So those edits will be made.
So the order has been.
Just for clarification.
Right. Okay. All right. It was just pointed out to me by the clerk that the order does have today's date on it. It's dated January 23rd, and it does have pole number three listed on here.
And the previous order was dated December 14th.
Yep. So that supers, this supersedes that.
I have it shut off, I don't know why it makes that noise.
Here's the order.
That was you.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any further, okay, do I have a motion to adopt?
You do, I already made it.
Okay, second?
And we had a second.
You have a second, okay, thank you.
The agenda is incorrect.
Yeah. Counselor Aluskowitz, did you second that?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
But the order is correct.
Okay.
So we don't have to amend the order.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
There's no such thing as North Church Street.
Communication number, sorry, Council Paper number 12,354, Communication Number 15 from Mayor Maxey for the reappointment of Krista Sprague to serve as a member of the Human Services Commission for a term to expire on January 1st, 2027.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Communication Number 16 from Mayor Maxey for the reappointment of Amanda Hartlidge to serve as a member of the IDEA Inclusion Diversity Equity and Access Commission for a term to expire on February 8th, 2027.
Moved to adopt.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Where's the second?
Who's the second on that?
Ashley and I were simultaneous, so if one of us is the first and one of us is the second.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's too bad we didn't have instant replay.
I know.
Oh yeah, because we want to spend the time doing it.
Council Paper number 12,356, Communication Number 17 from Mayor Maxey for the reappointment of Desiree Taylor to serve as a member of the IDEA Commission for a term to expire on February 8th, 2027.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion?
Aye.
Opposed? Council Paper number 12,357, Communication Number 18 from Mayor Maxey for the reappointment of Jason Moran to serve as a member of the Mass MoCA Commission for a term to expire on February 1st, 2027.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Council Paper number 12,358, Communication Number 19 from Mayor Maxey for the reappointment of Jesse Lee Egan to serve as a member of the Planning Board for a term to expire on February 1st, 2029.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
So Blackmer, Counselor Aluskowitz. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Council Paper number 12,359, Communication Number 20 from Mayor Maxey for the reappointment of William Shanahan to serve as a member of the Youth Commission for a term to expire on February 8th, 2027.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Point of order, I can't read it that well, but I think our thing says 28th?
Did I misread that maybe?
It's a type of one the agenda, one to the other.
Okay, because I have February 28th, 2027.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay. All right, any discussion? Motion to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Council Paper number 12,360, Communication Number 21 from Mayor Maxey for the reappointment of Lisa Blackmer to serve as a member of the Planning Board for a term to expire on February 1st, 2029.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You didn't ask for discussion.
I'm sorry, discussion?
I just, I need this thing, no, this.
I want to do it right.
Yes.
Nope, I'm all set.
Counselor Shade.
Yes, through the chair to the mayor, I know previously you had not wanted to appoint or reappoint members of the council to different commissions, so I just wanted an update on that.
Yeah, sure, I tried to do that. Counselor Blackmer has served the planning board very well, and when Counselor Sapienza appointed her as a liaison, I thought it would only be appropriate to cover both at once, but she's been a solid planning board member, and I'd like her to continue.
Perfect, I completely agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted that for the record.
I'm abstaining from that vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council Paper number 12,361, A Communication from Counselor Andrew J. Fitch Requesting Time for Presentation by Berkshire Harm Reduction Staff About the Effects of Drug Use and Overdose on North Adams Community and in Demonstration How to Acquire and Administer Narcan to Save Lives. I will file the communication without objection, and Counselor Fitch?
Absolutely, yes. Folks, hello. We have several issues that affect our community. One of the largest is addiction, is overdose deaths, and so I thought it was really worth having a presentation tonight to go through the facts and figures so we can learn a little bit more about this, help kind of cut through the stigma, educate ourselves, and hopefully also help solve this problem. So we do have a representative from Berkshire Harm Reduction, thank you so much for coming here, and is going to present briefly about those facts and figures and then do a little demonstration about Narcan. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Long from Berkshire Harm Reduction, we're actually three behind you. So what we do is we have a consumption service.
Can you use the podium?
Oh, yeah. Do I have to begin now? No, you can come right here.
Use the, there you go.
Thank you. So we are a consumption service, so we primarily work with people who do use actively drugs. We also do SCI testing for anybody above the age of 13 and treatment.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Oh, it's so low, I'm so sorry.
And that microphone goes to the TV, but the clerk needs to hear you to take the minutes, that's why she asked you to speak up.
Sorry.
Outdoor voice, please.
And we also do substance testing, so anybody can come in and bring a substance to be tested, and what we're finding now is a lot of our substances that are in North County have not only fentanyl, I can tell you that a majority of them definitely do have fentanyl, whether it's an opiate or a stimulant, a lot of our cocaine and crack samples are also coming in with fentanyl in them. Another big thing that we're having is xylazine, I don't know if anybody has heard of that, but it's a veterinary tranquilizer, and what it's doing is if somebody overdoses off an opiate, Narcan is not working for the fact that xylazine is not an opiate, it's a stimulant. So what we're finding with that is that we're having a lot more overdoses, and it's taking a lot more Narcan for somebody to finally get out of that, because it can put somebody in cardiac arrest, it represses everything, their blood pressure drops, can be really, really scary. North County, we don't have the statistics from 2023, but in 2022 Berkshire County had 47 overdose deaths, in North County it was 12. North Adams was eight people, that's not people who live here, it's they were here and they overdosed here. So what we have is Narcan that we're literally trying to give to everybody. We give two doses out, and all of you have some at your table, it's the easiest thing to use, it has no adverse effects, you can give it to anybody, and if they're not having an opiate overdose, they're going to get a wet nose, that's it. It's just like Afrin, you just put it in your nose and you pump it. You don't have to prime it, it takes three minutes to start working, and it can save somebody's life. It is the longest three minutes, but unfortunately because of how the Narcan works, it's absorbed through the mucous membrane in your nostril, or you can do it anally, usually we do it nostril, and it takes three minutes for it to fully get absorbed. So in our kits, we have the two doses of the Narcan and a CPR face shield that we give out to anybody, everything is free of charge, we can come to anywhere and do classes for people if anybody wants to come in and just grab it, I also have a bunch if anybody would like some to take. So that's pretty much what we're doing, is just trying to get a good curve on the overdose statistics.
Okay, anybody, anything else?
No, I think.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Counselor Breen.
Actually, I have a question through the chair to the mayor. What's the protocol at schools? Do they have these at schools, are they trained? What is the situation with this?
I believe our SRO, our Student Resource Officer, as well as our nurses, have them on hand, but I'll verify that. And you know, obviously something like this that happens, it's a quick call to 911, but I know that the SRO definitely has Narcan in her possession.
And say it happens in school and they give it, what's the protocol administrate to a minor?
It's the same as an adult.
The same as a?
The same exactly as an adult, correct.
Okay, Counselor Morrow.
I don't have a question, I just have a statement, but I just wanted to commend you. I work in this field, I work at Keenan House North, and you guys have done trainings there and have given a lot of information, and it really helps, and it's really good stuff to know. So yeah, I just wanted to commend you on that.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Shade.
Yes, through the chair, first I want to say thank you for coming and presenting was this evening. This is an extremely important thing for anybody to know, because as has been said repeatedly, just knowing the steps and having this available can and will save lives, and you just never know during a medical emergency what that might be, so just being able to administer this and provide that to somebody could save a life, and that's really important. I would love to have a conversation with you outside of the meeting and potentially have a joint training with you with the IDEA Commission. I think that'd be a great way to utilize our IDEA Commission and your services as well and put on a public forum for the community.
I would love that, thank you.
Excellent, so I'd love to talk to you about that, but thank you, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Couple of final words, I know there are some members of the community that don't believe in the use of Narcan, but if you can save a life, maybe you've given that person a new opportunity to be able to get away from the opiates and to be able to recover and be able to lead a normal life further on. It's a terrible epidemic, and you just never know when you're going to be in a situation where you're going to have to provide this life-saving service. So I fully endorse, you know, somebody having to use, if you have it available to you, use it. That's all I have to say. Anybody else? Counselor Shade.
Sorry, one more question through the chair. I see that these have expiration dates on them. After they expire, if you were to use it, would it still work or just not likely to work?
No, so it will still work. They have done tests that up to 10 years after the expiration date, it still works just as much as the.
Okay, so it wouldn't cause harm if somebody had an expired one and tried to use it on somebody?
No. The only thing that we find is sometimes if it's too cold, the plunger won't work.
Ah, okay, makes sense.
So that's the biggest thing that we go.
So keep it at room temperature if possible.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people do keep them in their cars, I do, but I've never had a problem with the plunger.
Perfect.
Just have heard that some people have.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. All right, licenses. An application submitted by Michaela Bailey to be granted a license to drive a cab, drive a taxi cab for RJ's Taxi, motion to grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. An application submitted by Teresa M. Wheeler to be granted a license to drive a taxi cab for RJ's Taxi, motion to grant.
Motion to grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Open forum, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. Is there anybody who would like to speak to the council tonight? Yes, sir, please state your name and address for the record. Go to a microphone, please.
Hi, my name is John Tibbetts, I'm at 41 Wyndham Terrace here in North Adams, and I'm here to talk about Mass MoCA's Free Day, which is on Saturday, January 27th. We anticipate about 2,000 visitors to the museum throughout the day. In the Hunter Center, we have an incredible artist collective showing this piece called Firebird. This residency used over 300 recycled car taillights locally sourced here in the Berkshires, which will illuminate to the sound of the piece Firebird and become this hypnotic kind of dance event within the Hunter Center throughout Free Day. KidSpace, our Kids and Family Gallery, will offer art-making activities and will be a free guided tours hourly throughout the museum. We will also have American Sign Language guides in our Joseph Grigley exhibit, which will lead guests through a deaf experience with guides who are themselves deaf and sharing the work of the deaf artists in the display. Those will be from 10 to 2. Local musicians will be performing in the elevator, the freight elevator between Building Five and Four throughout the day as well, and we'll be having 18 community organizations set up in Building Six. We wanted to provide the community access to these incredible resources. Some of the community organizations are Berkshire Harm Reduction, the Berkshire District Attorney's Office, North Adams Public Schools, North Adams First Fridays, the Hoosak River Revival Association, North Adams Pride, Northern Berkshire Community Coalition, Teens Root Center, the North Adams Chamber, and the Berkshire Immigrant Center, Berkshire County Head Start, in total we have 18 community groups. And so the museum's open from 10 to 5 on Saturday, and we really hope if folks want to come through, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mayor's Updates.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted, I'm sure you've all read in the paper, but we are in receipt, or soon to be in receipt, but we've been awarded 1.2 million for storm remediation relief, or storm relief. As I said in the newspaper, we're looking to reimburse ourselves for some of the work we've done on Brooklyn Street, but we're going to really focus on getting a solid plan to fix the issues in the Brooklyn Street, Eagle Street, Fuller Bryant, and Frederick Street areas, which sustained significant damage during the July 10th storm. In addition to that, to complement that money, we've been working with MEMA and FEMA on three grant applications to repair other areas within the community. So fingers crossed, while we're very grateful for the governor's funding of the 1.2, we still have a lot more work to do within the community when it comes to flooding. But that was exciting news, it was happy news, despite it was a little bit late down the road, but we were thrilled. But that was exciting news, it was happy news, despite it was a little bit late down the road, but we were thrilled that we weren't forgotten. So for us, storm remediation isn't an exciting topic, but it is in our world, so we thank the governor and lieutenant governor for not forgetting us. So more details to come as the applications get hopefully approved, but that is work that somewhat has been absorbed through our budget, and the engineering work will be able to continue in those high-impact areas, so we're excited about that. Other than that, that's my exciting news of the week, so thank you.
I think you forgot something.
What did I forget?
A wrecking ball.
Oh, yes, I know, it's so long overdue. So for those of you who haven't heard, the Prospect Street House, as well as the Houghton Street House, were demoed. Prospect came down first, followed by Houghton Street, so those two projects are nearing 90% complete at this point. We thank all the residents in that area for their longtime patience, and, you know, the contractors did a great job. Took us a little bit while to get up and running, but it's definitely an improvement to those two areas. So we'll see where all of our numbers end and get prepared to do some more rehab or some more demo in some neighborhoods. But for those areas that we haven't touched when it comes to abandoned houses, we are really trying to find resources to take care of some homes that cannot be returned to their good state. But thank you for reminding me of that. It's been on my radar for close to 40 years, so for one property in particular.
One question. How are you standing on the YMCA roof?
Yep, so Gary Construction has been out there with Rivet this week. They are starting to mobilize. We've issued a notice to proceed, and contracts are going back and forth, so it's coming. It's going to be fixed.
Thank you.
Going to take us a little bit longer, because we're challenged by the temperature for the roof, but we're hopeful that we can at least get the beam work inside done, and then focus on the roof, but we're hoping, you know, mid-March, early April, but again, it's all contingent upon the weather.
Thank you. Actually, one more question.
You said that already.
Okay, this is the last, I promise. The Brown Street Bridge, where do we stand on that?
Yeah, so the Brown Street Bridge, we have the engineering, we're working on the spec and getting ready to get that out to bid. Mass Dot did all the engineering for us, so we're engineering a temporary fix, it won't be a total rebuild, but we're working on the spec, and hopefully, we'll get that out to bid very soon, but it's going to take some time. They're estimating it at a $300,000 expense, but I don't believe the number until it comes in, it seems a bit low, and we are hoping that we'll cover that by our additional Chapter 90 money that we received.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Shade?
Yes, through the chair to the mayor, on that fix, you said it's more of a smaller fix. How long of a time period would we expect that fix to last for, before needing a full replacement?
I believe they said about 20 years, but I can research that and get back to you. Again, we're, you know, we're looking, I'm looking at maps that mean nothing to me, so I will check with Tim and get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Committee Reports in Minutes. No hearing none. Liaison Updates And Counselor Concerns. Counselor Blackmore?
I want to mention the fact that Counselor Fitch and I went to the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting this past Friday and Saturday, along with the governor's announcement, actually, it was the lieutenant governor that announced it, of the money we were getting for the flooding. There were a lot of other announcements, including a 3% increase for next year for unrestricted government aid, which helps us, and since they are only agreeing to revenue forecasts of a 2% increase, the fact that this is more than that was really, really good news. They're also committed to the 15 million in rural school aid, which doesn't mean anything to us, but it affects every community around us. There's also this thing called COMBIs, that you have to register every single project you want to do or thing you want to buy in municipal government, and they're relieving us of many of those restrictions, and as someone who has to do that as part of my day job, I was thrilled. It was kind of a really wonky front row of the session. The other thing she mentioned that got a big applause was enforcement opportunities and vehicles for dual poles when they are not taken down by grid or anyone else. So everybody was excited about that, I know, this is really wonky stuff. There's also a commitment to early childcare, fund money into pre-K and money for organizations who provide childcare, and a commitment to early literacy. There were also, that was just the speeches by the governor and lieutenant governor and people, and also our senators were there, Senator Warren and Senator Markey. In addition, there were a bunch of workshops. I attended, obviously, the fiscal update one, and there were others, but you can also check out, if you go to MMA.org, click on the annual meeting, and then click on the workshops. As you go through each workshop at the end, they have the power, most of them have the PowerPoint presentation. So if you actually want to go and look at some of the stuff that you missed out on, it's there, and again, I encourage everybody to figure out and make a plan to attend next year. I know the mayor and I are going to talk about how to make that easier for everybody, and I know that Counselor Fitch has something to add on what he went to.
Okay, Counselor Breen, you had something?
Yeah, I wanted to talk about the cost of electricity. You know, there's been a lot in the news that the price is going up.
Can we hold that for one moment?
After this?
Yeah, let me get... Counselor Fitch, and he can follow up on Counselor Blackmore's MMA conference.
Yeah, sure, and two brief updates. That, I was going to say all of that if you didn't say all of that. Lisa Blackmore, folks, is not only an attendee of this, but is one of the leaders of this organization, and I just wanted to say how inspiring that event was, how many great connections I made. You know, I had dinner with the representatives from Greenfield, and, you know, had lunch with the Adams people, and having great representation from North Adams there is so important, because it does show the state, we want to be great partners to you. And this current administration, according to what they say, wants to be great partners to us, so thanks for doing this, Lisa Blackmore, excuse me, Counselor Blackmore, and thank you for attending as well, and thanks for pointing out, too, that we can still go back and read those slides, I'd forgotten that. The one other thing I just wanted to mention, we haven't, I haven't had one of these meetings yet, but I'm the liaison to the Mass MoCA Commission, just doubling down on what John Tibbetts said over there, Mass MoCA Free Day, you know, free, 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 community, 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 that's all I heard. This event is for us, this event is for our community. Mass MoCA is for North Adams, and so I just wanted to double down and say that, and thank you so much for doing that, and also for hosting me through First Friday and North Adams Pride, looking forward to it.
Okay, Counselor Breen?
Yeah, what I want to do is talk just a few minutes about the cost of electricity. We've seen it go up in the last month, and looking at the situation for North Adams, we have belonged to a consortium for quite a few years, I think it's seven or eight years, and the price has been steady right along. And I looked at last month's bill and this month's bill, and the bill has broken up into the delivery and the supply. The delivery is like the telephone poles, how it gets here. The supply side, which comes, is the cost of the electricity, and that's where we go through the consortium. This month, in the consortium price, has gone from a little under 10 cents in the month of November, and to December, it's gone to 15 cents. So that's a 50% increase in half of your bill. It represents about half of your bill. So it's kind of like if you went to the gas station, today it's $4, the next day it's $6. And what I'd like to know is, and I certainly would like to help any way I can, there's around 22 different consortiums, and if you look at the pricing, a lot of the pricing is going up to 24 cents, you know, and I was looking at mass grids pricing. We ought to start looking, what is our best deal for this consortium, because what you've got to think about is, North Adams, a lot of people, many, many people, are under this consortium, so half of their bill is going up 50%. And the other thing is, I believe, through the chair to the mayor, you're also in the consortium in the schools, right? So just taking the school buildings, it's around, I think, about $200,000 in electricity, and then add the other. We're going to see if we stay with this consortium at this price, and it may still be the best price, because lots are even higher, it could be an increase of over $100,000 to the city. And so we've got six months of the present budget we're in now, you know, from January to the middle of the summer. This is a critical thing that's already here, that the bills are on their way. So you'll see that I'm not, this is what my bill was, you read it.
Yeah.
Read it. And, you know, I can't afford that, and the thing is, what you've got to think about, you know, people on social security, that goes up 2%, 3%, when you've got this major bill going up 50% on half of the bill, that's concerning, and especially during this cold, cold winter. I think we ought to get a group together. Through the, I don't know who does the consortium now, who watches the prices?
We do, we have a consultant that does that.
Okay, and are you working with them, or?
No, I'm not working, yes, I am working with them.
Yeah, because this is really, you know, the school buildings, you know, I know, you know, you've got McCann that I'm on, and we're looking at bills, we see gas bills going up. This is a major, major concern. The other, and the other thing that is concerning me, this is the year, our 10th anniversary of our cable agreement, that is also going up dramatically this month. And when we negotiate in September for a new cable structure for 10 years, we ought to think about, over the last 10 years, how high these prices have gone up. So I just, we've got a lot of high prices in January in North Adams that are very, very concerning.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Breen. Anybody else? All right, I have correspondence here. I have a letter from National Grid that was sent to me via email from Matthew O'Brien, and this is just for general information, and it says, Dear City Council, I am reaching out to introduce New England Power Company, doing business as National Grid's E131 Asset Condition Refurbishment Project, referred to herein as the Project, and myself as a point of contact to the city of North Adams for the project. The project covers approximately 13 miles, starting in Reed's Borough, Vermont, and ending in Adams, Massachusetts. As part of the project, NEP proposes to remove the current predominantly wood structures and install new steel H-frame structures and foundations, install optical ground wire to improve communications, and perform access improvements and construction of new access as necessary. Currently, NEP is working to obtain all required permits at the local, state, and federal levels. On October 31st, 2023, NEP filed a draft environmental impact report, known as the DEIR, with the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, known as the MEPA, office for the Massachusetts portion of the lines. The DEIR was published in the MEPA Environmental Monitor on November 8th, 2023. The DEIR can be viewed on our project website under the Project Resources tab. Goes on to say, NEP is committed to keeping residents, businesses, local officials, and community groups informed and engaged in the project. Various mailings, including a postcard sharing the project website and contact information, a fact sheet, and a project information, and DEIR notification mailing, were sent to the project abutters. In the summer of 2022, abutters residing within the environmental justice communities of the project were mailed an invitation to a virtual presentation. The invitation was also published in the Greenfield Recorder and the Berkshire Eagle. This presentation can be viewed on our website. In November 2023, we mailed invitations to North Adams abutters to attend a project presentation we hosted in Adams, Mass. Throughout the project, if residents should have any questions or would like additional information, please direct them to our toll-free project number at 877-616-3131. The email is info@e131project.com, or website at www.e131project.com. And the contact information is below for Matthew O'Brien. And what this is, the E131 is a high-voltage power line that runs from Reed's Borough, Vermont, into Adams, Mass, and I believe a portion of it does run through the city of North Adams. And that's all I've got. And at this point, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.